Mr. Fenner, you can take us out of the practice session on Zoom. For all board members, as a reminder, we have microphones turned off when you're ready to speak. Please bring my folks close your mouth, turn the microphone on. It helps with the acoustics, both here in the room as well as for anybody listening on livestream and get up on the video broadcast. Mr. Fenner, if you just want to let me know when you see people sign in, and then we'll begin. Just another moment. Dr. Morthe, ready, did you?
Right. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 851-1455-5789, and the required password is 711016. All right, I call the meeting to order. Mr. Blaker.
Mr. Copley.
Here.
Ms. DeVeniero.
Here.
Mr. DeSilva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Kazmarski.
Here.
Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Sacco.
Here.
Student representative, Mr. Edward Keen.
Here.
Ah, there's Mr. Edward Keen. And Dr. Morthe.
Here. Full house tonight, excellent. All right. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record, specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on December 7, 2022 in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. Copy was filed with the township clerk. Salute to the line, Ms. DeVeniero. Okay. Looks like we do not require an executive session in the beginning, so let's go on to agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. Okay, motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. Kazmarski, second by Mr. DeSilva.
Hi, Danielle Ryan, 22 Riverview Terrace, Mawa. The item number is 18 personnel and appointment number M. My issue is, the last meeting, rather, there was a list of, my kids are in Lenneby, so there was a list of 29 individuals that were okay to volunteer. So I never, like, was able, I never volunteered. I didn't get a, I must have missed the email or whatever to give me that opportunity. So the night of the meeting, I'm at home, I emailed the HSO, and I've never heard back. So I'm curious why, like, I'm missing from this, if we're adding people, why I wasn't included on this list.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
Ms. Ryan, what school specifically do you?
Lenneby.
Okay. That, I'm not aware of that. What I can do is I can connect you with the principal and the Aegis. So this is not something that's a one-time thing. We often do volunteers on an ongoing basis, so we can look into the matter. We always want volunteers, so we don't want to stifle that at all. So I'll make sure that I check in with Mr. Waika to see what the logistics are for that.
Yeah, I didn't email him. I just emailed, because the post had said to email the HSO directly. That's who I emailed.
Right, so I'll make sure that he connects with the exec for the Lenneby Meadows, HSO, to make sure that we get you on the list.
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ryan.
May I speak?
Sure.
I just wanted to, my name is Justin, I'm a parent here.
Okay, do you, what item number are you referring to, agenda?
M, I think it was the letter M that Danielle was just speaking about.
Oh, 18M, so under personnel as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, sure.
I'm a parent at Lenneby Meadows as well. I was just curious as to what the process is of choosing the volunteer.
Dr. DiToro?
Along the lines of HSO volunteers?
I mean, this is specifically to assist in the library.
The library, yes. I'm just curious, because I know a lot of people did ask to volunteer and they weren't chosen. So I'm just curious as to why.
That's not, that's not a board process. What happens is, the HSO have a number of committees that they look to fill. I don't know exactly how, they're the ones, once they get the interest from the parents, what they do is they start to look at what committees they need to fill, and then they fill accordingly. I don't know specifically what's going on with the filling of those volunteers at Lenneby Meadows, but like I said to Ms. Ryan, what we can do is, we can connect you with Mr. Waika. Actually, just so, just so you know, just, Mr. Waika will talk to the exec board for the HSO, and then they can give you clarification.
But then it comes to you to confirm this?
Yeah, because all volunteers need to be approved. If they're going to be working within the school for an extended period of time, that's a procedure that we have to do. The one-time volunteers, like the book fair and things like that, they don't have to be upward approved, but if you're going to be in the school in a capacity of supporting something within the school, that then needs to be upward approved.
But then this is just too late to?
No, not necessarily, because, and if you go back to previous agendas, you'll see there's an ongoing approval oftentimes every single meeting. So that, if you're not on it this time, again, I don't want to stifle anybody from being interested, from volunteering to be a part of the school. We'll figure something out.
Okay, I have more comments, question?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, so the HSO operates separately from the board, so I guess they feel the interest in volunteering. They pick, whatever their process is to choose who's who, and then they submit to us just for the approval, if he's a bit to be in school. So that's not anything that we actually have, you know, have control.
That's correct, that's correct. They don't consult with billing admin or board to select the volunteers that will attend to whatever posts they need to fill.
Right, and then when there is a request to go to the HSO, we don't see that.
Correct, that's correct, thank you.
But we'll get more clarity.
No, I just want to make sure.
Right, we'll get more clarification, it sounds like. Thank you, Dr. DiToro. All right, motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Copley, second by Mr. Gallo. All right, superintendent's report. Dr. DiToro, I see a lovely turnout tonight for our meeting. Lot of smiling faces, so.
So I'm very excited to see all of our guests here. Thank you for coming. This is something that we wanted to do at the last meeting, but unfortunately, our athletes had previous engagements. I believe you guys had games for your club teams and things like that. So thank you so much for the team and the parents to come and attend. This is just really special time. Let me just give you a little background before I get into the specifics of why the athletes are here. Last year, Mr. Corey, Ms. Whalen, and a number of students came to me and asked for us to consider reinstating middle school sports. It was wonderful to sit with the students that really presented a wonderful argument of the benefits of reinstating middle school sports to Ramapo Ridge Middle School. A lot of the things that they spoke about was to build camaraderie, camaraderie among the athletes. It talked about connecting the students to the school, and it also talked about continuing to build a sense of pride and being connected to Ramapo Ridge. Mr. Corey, Ms. Whalen, Mr. Pelletier, who's in the back, did a ton of work to research what's currently out there along the lines of sports, connecting with the league, to see the logistics of how we can get reinstated into the league, working with transportation, working with the coaches, and did a tremendous job of really turning this request into a reality. So I can't thank them enough for all the hard work to bringing middle school sports back. And it definitely came back with a bang. So we had our first season with boys and girls soccer. It was absolutely tremendous to see all of the athletes out on the field after school, working extremely hard with the coaches. We have our coaches here, we have one of our coaches here. We have Coach Caitlin Jones, who is here, and we also have Zoe Delory, who is unable to attend tonight, working with our athletes and really building a sense of team. You could tell when they were out there that there was tremendous talent, but coming together as a first-year team and competing is a challenge, to say the least. To be able to go out and watch them play after school and compete against other schools, the first thing I was wondering is, how are they going to be supported by our community? Mr. Corey coined the phrase of Phil the Hill. And to see all of our students out there, our teachers taking the time after school to go out there, board members were there, parents were there, other community members were there, and it was just a really exciting environment.
For high school athletes.
I was just going to get to that point. And the connection also, and Mr. Gallo makes a very good point, of our high school soccer team coming down and cheering on the girls was just a wonderful thing to see of the connection, not only within the school, but across from Ramapo Ridge to the high school. We didn't know what to expect for the season. They came out and they had great games in the beginning of the season, but we knew it was going to be a long season. And to see that the girls made it into the playoffs, we were excited. But I have to tell you, and a number of people are in the audience and on the dais that were at the championship game against Cavaleen. It was probably one of the most exciting games that I was a part of, and I was just a crazy fan, yelling and screaming. To see the girls who lost to this team during the season, but to be able to work hard and regroup and compete at such a high level at the championship game, and then coming down to a direct kick with less than one minute left. It's like these are the things that they write after-school specials about. And just the excitement that you saw on the girls' faces afterwards, the parents and the sense of pride that they had. Just know that you left a mark on Mawa this year, and it's something that we will never forget, and we hope that the athletes and the coaches and administration and the parents don't forget it either. So we felt like it was really important to take the time. You know, we come here, we talk about business, we try to celebrate things that are happening in the school district, but what better way to celebrate than to ask you to come and celebrate each of you tonight? So I just wanted to say, it is, we are celebrating the North, bear with me, the North Bergen Middle School Interscholastic Athletic League Champions, our middle school girls soccer team. So if you can give them a round of applause. If Mr. Corey can come up and just say a couple words.
Good evening. Before I talk about this extraordinary group of young women and their coaches, I want to express to the board and say thank you to Dr. Morthe, the entire board, Dr. DiToro, the entire central office team, Mr. Pelletier. Thank you for making this possible. When you approved middle school sports last spring, we want you to know that we know that that was not an insignificant commitment, and we are extremely grateful for that. And we can, we promise you that we are committed in turn to continue shaping and putting together a product that hopefully all of us could continue to be proud of. And if we win some games along the way, that's going to be great. But certainly, just doing it for the right reasons in the right way, we thank you for that opportunity, so thank you. To transition to this team and our coaches, Coach Delory couldn't be here tonight. She had a family obligation. Just extraordinary. When we started our season, we didn't know what we were getting ourselves into. There's not a lot of information out there about middle school sports. There's no scouting reports. We didn't know what the competition was going to be like. So we played our first couple games, and we started whispering to each other, hey, we're pretty competitive. And we started stringing some wins together, and there were some bumps along the way. We did have one really bad loss, it was nine to one. But what I loved about that adversity during the season, that nine to one loss, no matter who you talked to after that game, and I'm sure the girls would agree, whether it was a player, a coach following that loss, everyone had a bad taste in their mouth. And they said, we were better than that. And that didn't reflect, we just had a bad day at the office. And if we ever get a chance for a do-over, it's probably going to be a little bit different. So then we continued to win and piling up the wins. And then it was late in the season, and all of a sudden, we started having new whispering conversations. We never talked to the girls about it, but we said, wow, we must be one of the best teams. You know, we just keep winning. We don't know what the other teams are doing, but we know we're just winning all of the time. And then we started saying, are there playoffs? And if there are playoffs, how are they structured? I don't even think Mr. Pelletier knew how the playoffs operated or whatever. And then, you know, the rest is history. We get into the playoffs, we get to the championship game. Not only did we do a little bit better against that team that we lost nine to one, we did a lot better. We won, and the rest is history. Throughout the season, besides all the wins, we also tried to have some fun. So on that day, before the big game, we said, what can we do special? And we put together, we said, let's have a pep rally, and what could that mean at the high school? And literally, when I tell you, a couple emails flew around, and next thing you know, the high school marching band is leading a parade through the hallways, and Mr. Kronk was in the Thunderbird mascot outfit. And it was just a really cool moment that put an exclamation point on this year. And we didn't know what was going to happen that afternoon. We did that little pep rally up front. We didn't want to mess with their pre-game routine at all, because they knew what they were doing. So after the drums left, and, you know, some of us had an opportunity to talk to the team, my message to the team was, just go out and do what you do. And play every moment like it could be that moment. These big games always come down to a moment. And if you were there that day, Dr. Morthe was there, a lot of board members, parents, grandparents, siblings, young kids, students, teachers, certainly parents. We traveled well throughout the season, home games, away games. We had a great fan base. If you were there, you knew that moment was going to be in favor of these girls. They were going to somehow win the game. You could have made it a little easier on all of us. Like, if you scored that goal, like, in the first minute, in the first three minutes, that would be nice. But I guess that added to the excitement. So we are proud of you, you will have this forever. My only wish is that this cohort of girls somehow, you know, stay together and go up through the Mawa High School program. Because if they do, I promise you, this will not be the last time that you're hearing from them. So congratulations, so let's give them a round of applause. Coach Corey couldn't be here tonight, but it's fitting that Coach Jones, Coach Jones, come on up. Coach Jones is a new teacher in our district, and I think it's fitting that she's here tonight in this role. From day one, she wanted to get involved. She said, how do I get involved? So I think it's worth knowing, Coach Jones volunteered the entire season and volunteered next to Coach Delory. So Mrs. Jones, Caitlin, thank you for your service. She will now introduce the members of the team, those that are here, as well as those that maybe weren't able to be here. Just stand when she calls your name.
Thank you. I can't out that speech, but obviously, love being with these girls. Yes, I volunteer by time, but I wouldn't change it for the world. Awesome job, congratulations. Okay, so just stand when I say your name. Leah Primmy, oh, she's not here. Charlotte Ferguson. Ava Ford. Kelly Garmendia. Lily Harrington. Peyton Kelly. Julian Granelena, who is not here. Alexandra LaFerrari. Olivia LaFerrari. Ashley Mahano Alfaro. Ella Martin. Ava Mitrak. Paige Mitrak. Tess Monks. Haranita Palanivili. Anya Patel. Enchika Padibandala. Lauren Prunk. Harley Rayo. Sienna Taylor, who's also my. Devin Tremblay. And Olivia Zucker. Congrats, girl.
We have your certificates, you'll get them afterwards, but we'd love to have a picture with all of you and the board. Board, you ladies, if you want, please just stand up and we'll get the girls a private picture. Come up here, girls.
Dr. Park, can you move to the right a little? Like, come on this side of Mr. Denise. There you go. Sorry, yeah, your left. I want this on Twitter right away.
Girls and families, please feel free, I mean, you're more than welcome to stay, but you do not have to, but now's a good time to make the exit.
Congratulations again, everybody.
The next part of my report, as we've done in the past, there are a number of assessment opportunities that take place throughout the year. We asked Dr. Bavino to come up and share the results of one of the many assessments that take place throughout the year. This one being the new one.
Hey, good evening. Tonight I'm here to, um, tonight I'm here to talk about the NJGPA, which is the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. We're going to talk a little bit about the history of this assessment. It is the first time this assessment was actually given to our juniors last year. So in September, on the April/September, the State Board of Education adopted the Graduation Proficiency Assessment. They said that the juniors of 2023, 2024, and the 2025, those graduating classes would take this assessment. In July 5th, the Governor Murphy said, hold on. 2023 class, we're going to make your assessment a field test. Because this assessment has never been given before, and also, if you remember with COVID, this class actually was a class that had not taken an assessment since eighth grade. So Governor Murphy felt it was really important to say, on this assessment, we're going to do it as a field test. So just keep that in mind. There are no graduation requirements in terms of assessments for the 2023 City Seniors, but if you look at the NJGPA, it will be required for the next coming class. So our current juniors will take it this spring. If you look at the NJGPA, you might say, well, why are we even recording on this? Because it's a field test. But there are some benefits to looking at the data. So one of the things that the state said is something that we should do is we can look at this data to see how's our curriculum going, how's our programming, do we have to change anything or tweak anything? There are also opportunities to focus on different targeted areas so that the next grade that takes it will have a better chance of having success. And then the other piece is a quote from the NJDOE, which I'll allow you to read. Now, what this is saying is what we've been doing. NJTSS and our data teams are exactly what we want to do. We want to look at multiple data points. And through our work with NJTSS this year and the data teams that we've set in case, that is exactly what we're doing. So overall, the NJGPA is set up a lot like the NJSLA. So our students take the NJSLA all the way up through ninth grade. They used to take it in 10th grade, but that was removed. So when the students now take it in junior year, I know that's a little confusing, but they now take it in 11th grade, the similar questions are there. So in our ELA section, they'll have two sections of 90 minutes, and in our math sections, there'll be two sections again of 90 minutes. The ELA component is testing standards in grade 10, and the math component is testing standards in Algebra I and Geometry. So it's a combination of both. The report will come back to families. So in November, we actually sent families the field test results. And in those results, there's two different ways that they have a distinction of whether you passed it or not. It's called graduation-ready or not yet ready, not yet graduation-ready. So that's it, they kept it pretty simple. So when parents are receiving those reports, they'll receive reports for ELA and for mathematics, and they'll be able to see where their child is. If you look at this chart, let me take you through what you're looking at here. At the top, you're going to see participation numbers. So for our ELA test, we had 198 students take the test last year. And in mathematics, we had 199. The difference of the one student is, when students come from a different country and they come into our schools, they do have an exemption of taking ELA exemption tests. So one of our students did not have to take the ELA section. So that's the difference there. If you look below, you'll see the blue sections are Mawa Blue. That is where our students ranked. And the gray is comparison to the state. We don't have historical data, obviously, to compare to, because again, this is the first time that they ran this assessment. So if you look for ELA, we had 65% of our students graduation-ready. 39% was what the state showed as ready. So we were well above, actually 26% above the state. And for mathematics, we were 76% graduation-ready, over the state's 50%. Again, 26 percentage points over. This is the current seniors, they took this in junior year, yes. Something that Mr. Pascal kept throwing in my ear was, please tell that- Something that Mr. Pascal kept throwing in my ear was, "Please tell them that there is no graduating senior that has not passed a test." So usually, in the beginning of the year, I stand up here and I say, "All those students that didn't pass the NJSLA grade nine or grade 10 test took other assessments." So please keep that in mind. This is the same situation. If you did not pass this test, you have a chance to pass other tests, and we'll talk about that a little later. This is our subgroup analysis for this assessment. If you see the N equals 10, this is just a reminder from when we did our NJSLA presentation. We cannot report on subgroups that are nine or less. So anything 10 or more, we can report on. So on the left-hand side of your screen, you have economically disadvantaged and special education subgroups. And on the right-hand side, you have Hispanic, Latino, Asian, Black, African-American, and White. If you look to the right of those category titles, you'll see little numbers. So for instance, our economically disadvantaged group, you'll see an 11. That means although those numbers are big, right, 55% did not pass or were not graduation-ready, and 45% were, that makeup is 11 students. Does that make sense? When you look over to the other side of the screen on the right, you'll see Hispanic, Latino, Asian, Black, African-American, and White. Please remember, just like in the NJSLA, these subgroups are mixed with economically disadvantaged, special education, and our L subgroups as well. Our L subgroups cannot be shown here because they are nine or less. This is that same subgroup analysis, but for mathematics. So I'll give you just a minute. Overall, the district did a little bit better in mathematics than we did in ELA. And when you're looking at these numbers, I want to, I want to not caution you, but I want to say, we never want to make sweeping statements about any subgroup because they are mixed with other subgroups. And because the numbers are only representative of a very small population, we really pride ourselves in MAU at the fact that we can look at this small subgroup and look at the individual student that needs assistance or that needs a small group moment. As opposed to looking at a large subgroup of maybe 100 students, we're really talking about 12 students, 20 students, 11 students. So we have that benefit here in MAU to look more deeply at the individual student. The state requires us to talk about what we do, right? What do we do with all this information? So there are some things that our upper-level supervisors and Mr. Pascal and Ms. Boni have put in place for our seniors this year. One of them's sitting right here. So in ELA and in math, it mimics each other. So you'll see, for students who did not pass a junior year assessment, they have other opportunities. So you can take the PSAT, the SAT, the ACT, the ASVAB, the AccuPlace, or all of these tests you've heard me talk about already. And again, going back to what Mr. Pascal would like to remind you, every single student passes a test before they leave. We have never had an issue with that. We have also created an app we call the AHASA course, but it's an alternative high school assessment course. We created it for both ELA and for math. This is for students that did not pass this assessment. And it is not a full-year class, but it can be a semester course or a half-year course. And we do this so that the teacher can really work on foundational skills, but then also test-taking skills for children that would need to pass a test. There's also, on the left-hand side, a Foundations of English 12 course that we've always had in place. This too is for students that might not have passed the ELA section. And on the right-hand side, this year, we created the Foundations of College Algebra and Statistics course. This specifically for students with special needs who also have difficulty passing this test. This course would help them there. This also gives our students a fourth year of math, which is actually really important if they want to go to college. And then also, we have summer school and summer supports as well that we put in place. And that is it. Did anybody have any questions on the information that was presented?
So we do the intervention, the intervention, the program we developed in Texas. When is that semester class? Is that your fall of your senior year you're taking that?
Yes, so AHASA you would take in the fall, and you would take it until you passed another test. So if you took an ACT, a PSAT, or the ASVAB, and you passed it, you can actually come out of it.
But we don't repeat this test for the non-passing students. That is, we don't actually know if our interventions would have changed the outcome of this test.
Yeah, so the state actually gives you the opportunity to retest the child in the fall of the following year. So this senior year, this senior class could actually take, right, if it was a real not a field test. They could have a chance to take it. But to be honest, I'd rather them in a class where they're building their skills and take another alternate assessment to the NJGPA. Does that make sense?
Yes, but so for example...
Yes, in terms of comparing variable to variable, yes. You're not comparing apples to apples. You're comparing apples to oranges.
So like, for example, if I took the ACT to be my alternate test, I'm assuming there's like a number value, you have to get more than an X to say you're good to go. But some of those students who did pass this test might have passed the ACT regardless.
Correct.
So again, we don't know necessarily if those interventions bent the curve, you know, we didn't figure it out. They were doing it before and after.
And what I will say to you is that if we're only relying on intervention in 11th grade, there's a problem, right? So we want to really look, our 11th graders, we want them to take this test with no problem, and we really want those numbers to be higher. So we look below that. So where are we intervening before? And that's what NJTSS does, right? So we're building, and we're building based off skills and deficits throughout their years with us. And then we have other data points, large test data points, that obviously the state produces. This class is a little bit of an anomaly because of the fact that they hadn't taken a statewide assessment for, you know, a couple of years.
And you're saying they're learning was disrupted by COVID and all that, so...
So...
Last words, you're good.
Something I also want to add, and Dr. Bavino, correct if I'm wrong. Dr. Bavino shared that, I believe, the scale score is up to 800?
It actually goes to 850, so 750 to 850 is passing.
And then, so the cut score is 750? And in looking, because we're continuing to look at the data and see what it can share for us, we had a large portion of our students who fell within that category of not ready. That fell between, was it the 740 and 750 line? So when you're looking at a scale from zero to 850, and you have a large portion between that 740 and 750 line, it's encouraging. Obviously, listen, we did wonderful compared to the state, but that's not something that we're going to rest there. We constantly want to continue to build those proficiency rates. But when you're looking at data, you want to look at it in its entirety and to see that a large number of our students who are not there yet, to see that they're right there, is encouraging. But continue to understand each student's educational profile. We're committed to making sure that we're building them where they are and really building those foundational skills.
From a timing perspective, I mean, we're seeing this, it's, you know, the first week of December. When did the school district get this from an actionable standpoint for those students? So you're talking about working on this in the fall. Fall's over. I mean, we're halfway winter over, I mean, they're halfway through the year. So kind of like, when did we get these results? When do we break this down for the individual students, even in those subgroups, to assist them in their path this year?
So it's a great question. We got them at the end of October. Parents received their score reports at the end of, it was middle to end of November. And then we have to report to the board and the public within 60 days. So that's why we're reporting now.
Regarding data, we talked about looking at data, and it actually answered one of my questions, and I did too, which normally happens. Regarding data, do we know the comparison of our subgroups versus the state? I know we did fairly well against the state overall. But do we know what the subgroups look like versus the state, as well as do we have a subgroup of gender? Do we know the gender breakdown, male versus female?
We do. So the gender breakdown is pretty much even. I will tell you, in ELA, for boys, we did a slightly lower. We were about 46% comparative to girls. So, but even pretty much throughout. Which we see, that's pretty much normal for us. So if you go back to the NJSLA data too, female-male comparison didn't lend itself too much information for us to lean on. So we don't have, I'm sorry, there was a second part to this question. We don't have the comparison to the state. At this point, the subgroups, yeah. They just...
We just have the overall.
Exactly, they just provided the overall.
Mr. DeSova?
So two things. So hypothetically, you know, you said the state gives, you know, the option to retest. And the fact that they get us that actionable information by November, just, you know, at least they're consistent, right? They're consistently like that helpful. So fantastic with that. So, you know, obviously, you know, it's interesting to see how we do against the state, but, I mean, I mean, if we compare ourselves to the state, like, that's a pretty low bar to set. Do we have, I know we used to get for, I think it was NJSLA, the district faculty...
District faculty, yeah.
Do we get something similar with this?
Not yet, not yet. But the state has told us with NJSLA, they're going to do that. So I'm assuming they will do this with the NJGPA as well. But for this round, for the field test, we don't have that data.
So does this replace NJSLA, or are we still doing that?
So technically, the history of it, right, is you had this AHASA assessment way back. Then we got Park, then we got NJSLA. NJSLA went up to 10th grade. We dropped NJSLA 10th grade, so we only go up to ninth grade now. And now they replace 10th grade with an 11th grade test, which is the NJGPA.
So should we take bets now on how long this will last?
Is this done with class of 25?
This will be, yeah, so our current seniors don't have a requirement for an assessment. Of course, we have other requirements for graduation, but not an assessment requirement. And then following years, yes, they consider a requirement to take it.
So it'll go past the class of 25?
Yes.
Unless they come up with a better one. And then it'll be something different.
We'll get results in April.
Or NSLA and this, yeah.
So what, it's, so when our faculty got these results? And they said, "Mike Gallo's name is on the not pass math," right? Did the faculty say, "Oh, yeah, I think, I suspected that Mike needed help in algebra or geometry, and I'm already on top of that." So like going to Ben's point, like, you didn't use results a quarter of the way, more than a quarter of the way into the year.
Yes.
And then they want you to bend the curve
Yeah.
at the last minute. And that's what your good point was, like, hey, what are you doing? You've got to be doing this stuff way ahead.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's really the only thing you'd have, is like the correlation of faculty or teacher expectation to the student list and say, "Oh, yeah, Mike, he never got math. We're going to need his help."
So Mike, that's a great question to speak to that. And I agree with the frustration that's shared along the lines of all the aspects of assessments and timelines and things like that. That's why I'm really proud of the work that's taking place with the NJTSS because this is just one of many data points that we get a chance to use to create those understandings of our students. So the goal of NJTSS is to make sure that there's ongoing awareness of how our students are performing from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And then once we hand them off to the following year, there's not this exploratory time. There's opportunities for them to continue the work from that handoff of the previous year. We don't have to wait for an assessment, this singular assessment, to come and say, "Mike DiToro really needs some work on his reading strategies." That's something that we're embedding protocols and systems in place. So that's already something that we're working on. Whether this comes or goes, or they report in December or January, it shouldn't matter. That's the benefit of the NJTSS model.
Yeah, so just to add to that, something else we did this year was, we actually tested, the district tested, we give PSATs to all sitting sophomores and juniors, which is an experience we have not done before and not something else that we're trying to be proactive in that case as well.
Any other question? Dr. Bavino, I just had one question. So, and again, this is more your opinion versus, do they consider this, or they made it a field test because of the performance, do you think statewide?
I mean, which MAU just busted through, but so suddenly became a pilot program and field test because of...
The timing is very, I guess apropos, I would say, right? So originally, it was going to count. And then I think, yes, once scores came in, there was also some talk that the cut score changed. So originally, the cut score they were talking about was going to be 725, but it changed to 750. So there's definitely different, different, different things in play in the background, I would say. But yeah, so I think we have to take it for what it is, right? It is a field test. It's the first time our kids were given an assessment like this. It does give us that data to compare to our other data points. And it's something that we can work with.
And I guess I ask that because a parent who receives this report should perhaps consider those factors you just spoke to and take the information, you know, with a grain of salt, perhaps. That it's all important, these are all data points that are important, but this is not the end-all, be-all. And it certainly will not affect graduation for any of our seniors this year.
When is it given?
It's given in the spring always. So I believe the dates were March, March 15th, 16th, 17th, and there. I know that's when we're giving it this coming, this coming year. It's going to be March 13th to the 17th, that week.
It was on St. Patty's Day. All right, are there any other questions?
Well, I think Dr. DiToro's point about our work and the goal on related to the New Jersey tiered NJTSS is so important to sort of gain more, you know, put us in driver's seat instead of waiting for these knuckleheads in Trenton to get their act together to say, "Oh, by the way, your kids say, you know, they did okay, but not great, and you only have three months to fix it." You know, it's sort of like, I mean, it's frustrating.
And just to clarify for people, NJTSS is the New Jersey Tiered System of Support. Just for people who may not have attended or pre, we're using a lot of abbreviations, but just to clarify. All right, well, thank you very much, Dr. Bavino, thank you. Anything else, Dr. DiToro?
One last thing.
Oh, jumping into your report.
No, 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 I... One last thing that I think is important to share with the community. I know we sent out communication, and this is really specific to our surveys. The communication was sent out last week and then this week, specific to our equity audit surveys. As I stated at the November 17th board meeting, we were unable to vote on the surveys at that time due to, we were still getting feedback from the board, from the administrative team, and making adjustments accordingly. We held the meeting last week in order for the board to vote on the surveys. That special meeting was made with the sole purpose for the vote, but more importantly, to give our families ample time to view these surveys. It's something that's very important that they have the information in hand. They get a chance to talk as a family and really make the decision of whether they would like their children to take part in the surveys. That's something that we committed to in the beginning of this process along the lines of transparency and sharing information. It's something that was at the forefront of our timeline along the lines of building these surveys, but more importantly, getting it in the hands of our community and our parents to view it before it goes active. Now, obviously, the adult side went out this week and is active, and adults can make their decision as they see fit. But we felt like it was really important to give our parents an opportunity to take a look at what the students were going to be experiencing come next week and make the determination accordingly. And also sharing the information with the parents along the lines of the opt-out process. So I just wanted to take a moment and share that with the board and the community, and that's all.
Thank you very much, Dr. DiToro. All right, Mr. Blaker, do you have a report for us this evening? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. One item to report on this evening, it's an item on the agenda, which is the budget calendar. This is the budget calendar for the 23-24 school budget. This is on here for two reasons. One is a requirement to meet CUSAC that we have, which is presenting a budget calendar to the board and having a discussion in a public board meeting. As well as, one of the board goals for this year is to discuss and have a little bit deeper understanding of budget financials in the background on how the budget financials are... are created, drafted, and then ultimately implemented within the district. So for the board members and looking at what you have at your seats, you have a budget calendar for the 2324 school year in front of you. This process begins primarily in October when we're setting up our system. We use a system CSI for our budget and accounting software as well as for payroll production. In October, we set that system up and prepared to input the budget for the next school year. In November, we begin gathering any historical information that we utilize as a reference during the course of the process, as well as any enrollment data, which helps to influence and gauge where we need to budget accordingly in the following school year based on where enrollment projections intend to be. Beginning in late November and into December, we start to share information with the various schools and departments who are responsible for inputting their own individual budgets. Those budgets begin to be inputted in December. We have meetings for any new staff that might come in as principals or budget secretaries to make sure that they're trained on how to input the budget correctly into the system. In January, we have that process completed. And also to go back to December, just for one moment, a lot of the other really large areas of the budget, such as health benefits, salaries, a lot of that is also inputted and completed within the month of December. And once we start January, the board reorganizes, begin meeting with the finance committee as well as Dr. Di Toro and Mr. Romero, building ground supervisor. If we have any ground-specific projects to discuss that we want to have incorporated including to the budget, those typically begin to play, take place in January and it continues into February. January, also we typically have a release of the budget software that the state provides us. This is a dedicated web-based software program where we input our budget into the state. It's already preloaded with audit information from the prior year and budget information from prior years. The program itself is designed to identify specific areas that the state reviews. That input is primarily done in February. And we're also finalizing getting some other data from outside sources we need, such as tax rate, ratable information from the township is provided to us so we can determine the appropriate tax rate for the district, as well as finalizing any last discussions with buildings and grounds initiatives or other things with the person, with the finance committee. In March every year, for those that recall, we do have a preliminary budget hearing. At this time, we're presenting the preliminary budget to the board. And after that presentation is then submitted to the county office for their review and approval. They have their own system of checks and balances. They review all the budget lines as well as some of the rationale and support that we give for any other areas that they ask to review for that year. It does change a little bit from year to year, but we provide that in March. And typically they will turn it around within a couple of weeks. In April, they'll give us any feedback that we need to incorporate and include. During this time, we can still make any changes to the budget if we need to. If I could go back one minute, one item that I did forget to mention was usually in late February, mid-March, mid, early March, one of the most important pieces is our state aid figures are released as well. Those are received from Trenton. It coincides with when the governor gives his or her budget address to the, to the state and to the legislature. That typically occurs end of February and budget numbers, state aid numbers, I should say, are released to us a few days following that. In late April, early May, again, based on the calendar for that year, it changes a little bit each year. That is when we will have gotten all of our information back and feedback from the county. Any last-minute items that we may want to adjust ourselves are done. And we have a dedicated public hearing as part of one of our board meetings in late April or early, early May. That will be when the final budget is presented and approved by the board and submitted as final budget for the year. We do have a requirement to post that budget a few days afterwards on our website. And lastly, with all this now being done, typically a few weeks later, we flip the switch, so to say, in our budget software and begin to activate the new school year budget for any purchase orders or things we may want to begin, begin putting in and inputting. So that is the very broad view of the budget process that we follow. Again, this calendar is a, doing two things here. It's a requirement that we need to do for CUSAC, presenting a budget calendar to the board for discussion, as well as addressing one of the board goals, which we're going to continue to address in future board meetings, discussing more about the finances and the budget here in the district. Any questions?
So assuming like we have in the past, there will be, I think it's, we usually break it up into like four or five chunks at, at public meetings that will be doing the same thing, though, both of them.
Yes, specific to Mawa, the method that we found to be most beneficial for us is beginning with that first presentation in March when we're discussing the preliminary budget. We'll break it up into three or four different sections depending on the number of board meetings we have between then and when our final budget is adopted. And at each meeting, I'll go into another section of the budget and do a little bit of a deeper dive in that particular section, addressing some of the details of it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Blaker. Our assistants should present. Dr. Fair, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yeah, so a brief report. The first piece is connected to Agenda Item 17K. I know that I referenced this in my memo to the board. It's, it lists an update to our safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of service plan. Every six months, we are to update this plan. And every time it's updated, it's to be approved by the Board of Education. We have to do this up through September 30th, 2023. This is just a legit school piece. Board Policy 1648, Safety Plan for Healthcare Settings in School Buildings was abolished. So that lists everything from quarantining, isolating, mask wearing, contact tracing, hand washing etiquette, and physical distancing. So that's been abolished and that is the language that's been added to that plan. And the second piece, if you'll bear with me, I'm going to read. We, we have a, we've recently had a passing of a, of a staff member, one of our paraprofessionals who's been here for 20 years. Her name is Maureen Donnelly. Excuse me. Recently, she's worked primarily at George Washington School. Over the course of the last 20 years, she's worked out of district as well as in every other school building, almost every other school building. Her dedication to the students in which she served exemplified by Mawa as such a special place. Most recently, Maureen worked at George Washington School. Her lasting love is embedded in the students that she cared for and in those that were her colleagues. We ask that our community keeps Maureen's family in their thoughts and prayers during this difficult time. We all miss her dearly. Every time I would see Maureen in the school building, just a few weeks ago, she was, she, as I was walking away, she said, Dennis, I pray for you all the time, right? And if you knew Maureen, that was who she was. So we'll miss her. It's, it's, it's truly tragic, so thank you. I, I'm not good at this stuff, but I felt like it was important enough to publicly note beyond just an email to her staff.
And she was, she's a Mawa resident and her two sons went to our sponsors.
Yes, and she was an RN, she, she was a lot of things. So she, she's going to be really missed. She was also a real important part of the culture at GW. So they're, they're devastated. So I thought it was important, especially because it's so recent as of Monday evening that, you know, the community is aware. Thank you.
Perhaps we should just take a moment of silence. Dennis, Dr. Fair? All right, thank you. And our thoughts and prayers are with her family and again, a loss for our district and, and a loss for our little schoolhouse on the other side, Mr. Gallo. So, thank you, Dr. Fair. All right, President's Report. So I don't have much, I'm gonna just, a couple of things. One, the surveys that Dr. Di Toro spoke to, and thank you for clarifying regarding, we did have a special meeting and Dr. Di Toro and Dr. Fair actually at that meeting did a very thorough presentation about the surveys. So I, I wanna just alert any parents who wanna go look at that, that that should be up on our website, Mr. Blaker, so that people could do that, even though, you know, as many people weren't in attendance in person, all of that information is always on our website. And I think we just wanna encourage as a board, you know, everyone to complete the survey. It's important information. It's one data point and multiple data points in this equity audit that we're doing, but we really want to hear all voices. So, so hopefully you feel comfortable to participate as parents and the students as well. But again, we encourage you to participate fully because again, the more information we have, the more we can find out about what needs to be done or not done. So again, all important information, okay? Number two, I just wanted to highlight as the holiday season comes, a lot of concerts going on, maybe Mr. Kane's gonna speak to that, but I, I love this time of year. It's, it's exciting to see our choruses, our, our bands, our strings. So I encourage everyone to get out and, and I, I love holiday music. So anyway, that's exciting. I heard there was a great talent show as well. I, I think there might have been participation from our student member, was there? Maybe, maybe. I think I saw something on the Twitter feed. So anyway, a lot of talent and I'm, I'm sure everyone really enjoyed the talent show. It's exciting and I'm sure it was exciting to participate. All right, that's all I have. Board Committee Reports. Mr. Copland?
First of all, transportation, we're meeting next week, so I'll have a more complete report the next meeting. Hanukkah's starting, for community relationships, sorry, my community corner. Hanukkah's beginning before the next meeting, so I want to wish everyone a happy Hanukkah. December is also the National Drunk and Drugged Driving Prevention Month. Serves as a reminder to never drive impaired and stems from the creation of MAD, Mothers Against Drunk Driving in 1980. The time between Thanksgiving and New Year's Day is described as one of the deadliest and most dangerous times on America's roadways due to increase in impaired driving. So remember to drive sober. Dr. Morty mentioned already, I want to congratulate all the rich students that performed last night at their winter concert. And a very special thank you to our music department staff who are doing an amazing job in preparing our kids. As Dr. Morty mentioned, please check out your school's websites for all the dates of upcoming concerts. And today is the anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor. Every year on December 7th, the nation pauses to remember the 2,403 service members and civilians who were killed during the Japanese attacks in 1941. It wasn't until 1994 that Congress officially designated December 7th as National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. It's important that we take the opportunity to discuss these kinds of remembrance days with all of our kids so they have a better understanding of the sacrifices that our service members make for our nation on a daily basis. So thank you to all our active service members, our veterans, and may God bless the memories of all those that we lost on December 7th, 1941. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Copland, thank you very much. Mr. Denise, policy?
Policy has four readings on tonight's agenda for first reading. These were basically from our review of the 3000 series, very minor formatting and grammar changes and such.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Mr. Denise? Anyone else? Mr. Kane, do you have a student representative report for us?
Of course.
What exciting things are happening over there at Mawa High School?
So with the holiday season and everything, there's a lot of club activities going on. SGA and all the honor societies are finishing up their Families for Families fundraiser, which I think I spoke about last meeting, which is like the adopt a family program that we've been doing. At this point, pretty much all the gifts, except a few slackers, have been turned in and are being wrapped by National Honor Society and are being dropped off on Friday. The Leo Club is giving out candy canes to all the teachers, which is nice for all the teachers in the building and staff. The Woodshop Club is having a gift sale after school one of these days coming up. And they made a bunch of like, I think like some keychains, some cutting boards, you know, woodshop things.
Woodshop things.
Interact Club was at the tree lighting, I think that was last week. Future Medical Professionals is making holiday cards for Veterans Home. And similarly, Habitat for Humanity is making cards, but for one of the senior citizen homes nearby. Talent Show was last week, as we spoke of. You know, as a group, I think Ryan Stanford was in my group with me too. We felt almost a little out of place. Some of the other groups had, you know, some actual talent. We pretty much got up there and embarrassed ourselves for a little bit. It was fun. The robotics team now has 70 students and their season's starting up. And also fits in with our technology and engineering pathway. And then on behalf of the robotics team and Mr. Pascal, we would like to thank the current outside sponsors, which are Insera Supermarkets, High Torque, and Shock Tech Safer World Group. With our other sports teams, Winter Sports is starting this week, Games. Hockey Team's the first one to go, we play Friday night, 8:30 at the Ice Hall against Ramsey, if anyone wants to come out. And then the Winter Concert is on December 20th, which is our orchestra band and choir. And then in terms of the Drama Club, the Spring Play was announced as Shrek and auditions are beginning in the next couple of weeks.
All right. Thank you very much. A lot happening over there at Mawa High School. Always exciting. Anything else? Mr. Gallo?
I just have a very brief report. I sat in for Trista at the Access for All meeting on Monday. They were very, very appreciative of Leo Club members and Habitat for Humanity Club members who assisted them last Friday at their sweater event. I think there were 25 high school students who pumped out. And this is not the first time, but it seems like those organizations have made a very strong connection with Access for All and they were, they're already planning out future events, so they were very appreciative of, of the support. The other thing that they were very kind enough to do is to distribute the equity audit survey to Access for All members. So to spread the word out to community members who we would not normally have contacted. So I, I expressed my appreciation for that effort as well.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Gallo. All right, board member remarks or additional comments? Mr. De Silva?
Yeah, so two things. The, back in the early 90s, we did something similar to the talent show. I was looking, I was looking at the lineup for the talent show. Actually, there was a lot of musical, you know, acts right there. So back in the early 90s, we did something a little different. We did a battle of the bands, complete with concert t-shirts with, you know, listing out the bands on the back of the t-shirt and everything. So, you know, maybe that's something, something to, to consider.
Were you and Mr. Kuzmarsky in a band?
I, I was not, were you?
For the record, I was one of the, I was the lighting record roadie sound guy.
Oh, okay, okay.
I, I sat in the back of the launch. Something I had to do. So, so just food for thought. I want to recognize our town council and administration and thank them for the awesome town tree lighting that we had back at Company One at the bottom of Miller where it should never have left.
Kind of like middle school sports.
But the, the, the event was fantastic. It was a lot of fun. I know it's, you know, it's gonna get bigger and better from here, but thank them to administration and our town council for bringing that Christmas tree back to the middle of town where people can actually see it.
Is that, is that what brought up the battle of the bands? It's like traditions coming back for you, Mr. De Silva?
It's funny, a lot of things from the 90s are going back to town. I don't know what that is.
You guys are all dating yourselves, you realize that, okay? Yes, Mr. Kuzmarsky?
I want to thank all of the students that marched in the parade and the party event. Our high school marching band Color Guard, the JK Choir, and everyone who's involved. It was, it was, it was the first one out of the gate. We've never done a parade at night before. We don't have it downtown like Ramsey. So there's some things we gotta work through. But it was great to see a lot of people in the center, the center of town, lighting a tree. So it was, it was great. But thanks to all the high school participants and teachers and John Pascal was there, of course.
Yep.
So it was great. So thank you. So it was great, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, let's move on to old business. 16A, the minutes from our November 16th meeting, need a motion. Mr. Gallo and a second, Ms. Cohn. Mr. Bleecker?
Yes.
Ms. Davinera?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kazmarski?
Staying.
Dr. Park?
I'm staying.
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
And Dr. Morty?
Yes. All right, let's move on to new business. That's taking A to L. I need a motion. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Denise. Yes, I just, sure.
Is 5th grade not going to the Intrepid anymore? They're going to Liberty Science Center for now? Is that a change? I'm sorry, it is on E?
Yeah, can you refer to that?
Yeah, I apologize, you're right, 17E is the last one.
I see, okay, yep.
Along the lines of the field trips for elementary schools, what they've done is they've worked, which is something that's been an ongoing effort, along lines of working with the other schools to make sure that there's no duplicates. So it's taken time to really start to settle into what the experiences are. So I know that even elementary administrative team has worked together, K through 5, along lines of field trips. So whatever field trips that they've decided on, that's what the ones that are posted here. So yes, 5th grade is going to be going to the Liberty Science Center, JK.
Frost Valley is over.
Thank you, I noticed, I'm just going to bring that up. Frost Valley is now an overnight again. That's exciting.
Yes, Ms. Whalen has done tremendous amount of work to bring Frost Valley overnight back. We know that that's a tradition, that's something that's special to Ramapo Ridge, and they also are working on the 8th grade trip to do overnight there as well.
Wonderful. And I just want to bring attention to the 17L, I'm sorry, I and J. We welcome donations to our various sports and programs and we thank those who have donated. All right, I think we had, so rope ball, Mr. Bleecker?
Okay, this will be a rope ball on 17A through L, it was motioned by Mr. Gallo, it was second by Mr. Denise. Mr. Copland?
Yes.
Ms. Davinera?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except on 17A, I am staying from checks number 109272 and 109345.
Thank you. Mr. Kazmarski?
I will personally take my daughter and her friends to the Intrepid, so I will look at you.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
And Dr. Morty?
Yes.
All right, let's take now new business personnel, we have 18A through N. All right, need a motion. Ms. Cohn, second by Dr. Park. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, Mr. Bleecker?
Mr. Copland?
Yes, and thank you to our parent volunteers.
Ms. Davinera?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kazmarski?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
I'm staying on 18M, otherwise yes on all.
Thank you. Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
And Dr. Morty?
Yes.
All right, public questions or comment. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with dialogue 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 and a half minutes. I need a motion to open to the public, Mr. Kazmarski, second by Mr. De Silva. And just a reminder, when you're, during public participation, please direct your comments to myself and then if it's appropriate, I will refer to someone else to answer. Okay? Thank you.
My name is Justin again, I'm a parent, Mawa parent. I just have a couple of comments and questions. First, I just want to congratulate Chris Hughes on being elected into the Board of Education. I think you saw by the number of votes that he did receive, there wasn't some type of anomaly, there was a reason why he got voted in. And so I hope that you guys kind of welcome him, listen to him, he's only one voice, and I know you'll show him some respect, but from what I've seen, from what I've been learning, from what I've been seeing in the past Board of Ed meetings and the town halls, not a lot of diversity at Flott here, it's pretty much one-sided. Chris is only one voice, which is great, but I think you need more balance here. I don't think there's a good representation of the town. And as a stakeholder, as a taxpayer, as a parent, community members, speaking to people in the town, I know that for sure, it's not being represented. And I think one of the responsibilities as us stakeholders is to hold you accountable, right? You guys represent us, we're a team, and I want us to be a team. So one of the things I do want to hold accountable, I remember from one of your Board of Ed meetings, right after that town hall, I believe it was a part where you were talking about the testing of the scores, and Mr. Park made a comment about how he said, from what he heard in the previous night of the town hall, how he couldn't see that racism isn't evolved by seeing race here. This is the, this is right here in the slide. So I said, okay, let me look at the slide, and I was like, okay, no. I looked at the slide, I saw it was a breakdown of testing scores by race, it was just a classification, that's all it was. And from what I saw, the top scores were Asian students. Last time I checked, Asian students were a minority. So I was a little confused, I'm Asian, all right, I'm a little confused by that, so, I mean, I was kind of, it was kind of laughable, all right? So you're contradicting something, I don't know what you're trying to prove, but it was wrong. All right, I'm trying to be nice here, it was very wrong. You're entitled to your opinion, that's fine, but you're not entitled to your own facts. So that's why I'm coming here to hold you accountable for that. Disparities does not equal discrimination. Okay? Disparities does not equal discrimination, there's tons of sociological research on this. So I want you to be very careful on how you're, this is going along with equity audit and I have a question, I want you to be very careful on what you're trying to insinuate here. And if you're not, I'm going to hold you accountable, other parents here will hold you accountable, you'll get questions.
Mr. Justin, can I just clarify?
Yeah.
You're using a sort of broad U?
Yeah.
First of all, it's Doc.
The Board of Education.
Oh, okay. And first of all, it's Dr. Park, just to clarify.
And I'm required to call him Dr. Park?
That, I mean, yes.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not putting you down or anything, that's fine, okay, I'm a doctor too, then I require that you call me Dr. Jacob.
Yeah.
Okay?
But you didn't provide your last name, Dr. Jacob.
Okay, that's fine.
I was going to call you Mr. Justin, but I'm happy to call you Dr. Jacob.
I see, I see how this is now, so it's fine, thank you. I have no, I'm not showing disrespect.
No, Dr. Jacob, I'm trying to.
Okay, thank you.
I'm trying to clarify because you're using a broader U.
Board of Education.
Oh, okay, so let's just clarify because I thought you were directing your comments to Dr. Park individually.
And I said, Mr. Park, and he knows that as well, and Board of Education, so I'm just.
All right.
Okay? So yeah, so I'm here just to hold you accountable to that, okay? So leading into that, you know, just, I have to say this, when you call everything racist, you cheapen the word, okay? You don't, you're never going to know what actual racism is, you have to learn from that, it's wrong, okay? So just stop saying that everything is racist. I know there was rumors going on after the town hall that people were being racist, you know that's not true, okay? This is going around town, I hate that, that's, that's wrong. We were stating our opinions, you, Prima, you said, Dr. Morty, sorry, you said in the beginning, you'd like to welcome everybody's opinions, and that's what it was. So we need to be very, we need to be very careful with this, okay?
And again, when you use the word U, so again, it's hard to determine, are you directing that comment towards me, to someone specific, or is the Board of Education?
Board of Education, when I say that.
Board of Education, okay.
All right, so this leads to my question.
Sure.
In relation to the equity audit.
Yes.
So what is the evidence that bias from district employees is a sole or even strong determinant of disparate outcomes? Okay? I'm seeing your faces. In other words, what led to the equity audit? I think a lot of parents don't know what happened. What led you to coming to this?
Okay, sure. And I'm going to let, perhaps if Dr. Dettoro wants to take that, but I actually just wanted to clarify one thing about Mr. Hughes, and just to let you know that we've actually already had a new member orientation with him, the executive committee, that's myself, Mr. Kazmarski and Mr. De Silva, with Mr. Bleecker, Dr. Dettoro, and Dr. Fair, and we welcome him with open arms. And I think if you, if you speak to Mr. Hughes, you would know that he has been, you know, sought out by individual board members, and there's an absolute welcoming of Mr. Hughes to the board. So I just wanted to clarify, Dr. Jacob, about that. Regarding the equity audit, perhaps Dr. Dettoro or do you, you want, let's let Dr. Dettoro answer your question.
Dr. Jacob, specific to, specific to your question, your question is, why are we doing this?
Yes.
Okay. In previous board, in previous board presentations and communication that we sent out to the community, from the last spring until now, we've tried to put forth the explanation of why, why we're doing this in Mawa now. The purpose of this is, when we put together the strategic plan, it very, it's really a large number of areas of focus when you're talking about how we can make sure that our, that our school district is operating at a high level. So there's a number of things specific to instruction that we've shared at board meetings, we've talked about different organizations that we're trying to build like we did with our middle school sports. And really, when we get to how are we servicing our students, we felt like it was most appropriate to make sure that all of our students felt as though, our students and our families felt as though they were respected, valued, and they feel like they have a home here. In order for us to do that, as, as me and my seat, you know, as a previous principal, as a current superintendent, I can't make that assessment and have that broad stroke, yeah, we're doing a good job. In order for us to do it, just like in the business field, people come in and they audit to make sure that everything's operating at a high level. So in order for us to do that here, we felt it was most appropriate to have someone come in and say, what is our current reality? What is our truth? And to see, what are we doing specific to curriculum, to make sure that our curriculum is representing the students in which we serve? What are we doing along the lines of procedures and protocols to make sure that everyone is afforded the same opportunities and make sure that we're supporting everyone wherever they are? So that this, and that was really a truncated explanation of why we got to where we are right now. Here's the thing, along the lines of an audit, it's an opportunity for us to celebrate the great things that we're doing. I don't want anyone in the community to think that the purpose of the audit is for us to say, man, we're doing an awful job everywhere. But I think if we take a step back and say, what's, what's the opportunity for the audit? We get a chance to see, yeah, let's celebrate the things we're doing, that's something that we do every single board meeting. But are there areas for us to continue to develop or ask questions, say, can we do this better? So for me, I'm going in with the open mind of saying, I want to hear what they have to say along the lines of their assessment of our functioning. Are we functioning at a high level? Because that's what this community deserves. Are we missing anything? Is there anything that we can do better? That's my perspective of going into this audit, along the lines of curricularly, social emotionally, and all aspects in between, because that's our responsibility, for you, the stakeholders, is to put out a great product.
Okay, so.
Go ahead.
Did you feel somebody was, or did you hear that people were being misrepresented? Sorry, misrepresented, is that why you, that's it, or you just, this just came out of?
No, no, to speak to your point, and I don't want to misspeak, you said one of the statements of, somebody said that people were racist.
Yeah.
At, at no point in any of my presentations did I call Mawa racist.
Good.
So, so that's, I'm not sitting here and making broad stroke assessments of, of our community or our practices, but I think it's worth noting that there are opportunities in any fashion, whether it's an equity audit or whether it's a basic curricular audit, to say, yeah, I think we're doing a really good job, but are there opportunities to grow? So I, so that's really something I would love for you to take away with, along the lines of any sort of broad stroke statements of this community is. At no point I've, is, is it responsible for me to make a statement of, this is what this community is. This is a large community, containing a vast amount of people from all different backgrounds, and it's a special community, but at no point in any of the communication that was sent out or the presentation, would a statement be made of this community is.
Right, okay.
And I just wanted to clarify to you, Dr. Jacob, that this, I think your, the focus on a singular point of race is not the purpose of the equity audit as well. The equity audit is looking at socioeconomic status, it's looking at race, it's looking at those who might be differently abled, maybe looking at, you know, kids with learning disabilities with other varying ability levels, so gender.
Gender, gender, sexual orientation.
Exactly, so this is, right, correct. So this is a very comprehensive audit that, again, comes out of our strategic plan, brought up by our administrative team and voted on now by the Board of Education.
And what Dr. Dettoro said was very innocuous, and I agree with you, who would want that? But the truth of it is what it is now, this is going on around the country, all school systems and around in New Jersey, it's a politically divisive issue, it's equity, diversity, equity, inclusion. Let's not, let's not, you know, forget that. So I'm only seeing one political bent here, and it, and there hasn't been any, there hasn't been any, excuse me, there hasn't been any real measurable positive results from it, we're seeing schools, academics kind of go down, who would want social emotional learning? Well, actually, define social emotional learning.
Okay, Dr. Jacob.
That's what I would like to know.
Okay, is there an additional question and then, because this has been discussed.
Okay, please define social, I'm not going to go back and forth, please define, please define social emotional learning for me, please.
Dr. Jacob, I just want to address, because there was, there was a whole slew of commentary. The equity audit is because we want to do right by all of our students and we want to know their story and we want to do right by them. So, so that's the first piece. The second piece is, we do respect those families who don't feel comfortable taking the equity audit. I think we were pretty clear in our, in our communication when we presented to our board, as well as in our email communication, that if families don't feel comfortable, they're certainly, like, they can certainly opt out, right? So we've had some families opt out, I think that due date is tomorrow. So if, if a family doesn't want their child to take the survey or be involved in talking to the consultant via onsite visit, that's perfectly okay too.
Right, and I hear you with that, but the trick with that is, as we heard at the town hall, is only one certain part of the town answers that, you're only, you're getting slanted results.
I understand that. Right now, in terms of the numbers of opt out, at the high school level, at the middle school level, we probably have the most so far. We have about 22 students who are being opted out right now at the high school level. At the middle school level, we have about 14 at the high school level. So I'm, I'm really hopeful that we can get a wide variety of perspectives because that's really important to us.
Okay, this will continue, but can you answer my other question as well that I asked? How do you define social emotional learning?
Social emotional learning has a number of different aspects to it. Social emotional learning, which we have talked about at previous meetings, is an opportunity for the staff here to work with our students on how they navigate different social situations. What I mean, social situations are, throughout their life, depend, it doesn't matter what age of life they are, they're coming at it with, is there are stressors, there are points of frustration, there are challenges that they face, and we try to give them the tools and how to successfully navigate them. And when you start to talk about SEL, there are, there are opportunities for us to be able to, real time, give them the tools that they need in order to not only deal with difficult situations on an individual basis, but also deal with situations in a group atmosphere as well. So SEL is something that, I mean, we're talking about a number of different topics, this is something that at the K-12 level we feel is extremely important. I know that there are people who come up and say, just teach our kids math, reading, and writing, but to be quite honest with you, school is a lot more than that, and it's an opportunity for us to continue to build them in a comprehensive fashion.
Actually, I agree with you, this has been adopted over 10 years ago, it's changed. So does this, so does, what you said, I agree with you, self-management, goal-setting, but does that include embedding that gender ideology, gender ideology, sexual orientation, social justice work? Is that embedded in what you're saying? Is that in there? It's gender ideology?
I'm gonna answer your question. I'm gonna answer your question now.
Dr. Jacob.
I'm still here.
I'm sorry?
I'll just repeat it. Is that enough?
Um, along the lines of, of SEL, the SEL piece is, when you're saying, is it in there?
Yeah.
It's, it's not a written curriculum. This is not something that every single grade, here's another additional thing that you're gonna do.
I'll say that, yeah, okay.
Dr. Jacob, could we, could you let Dr. Deturo finish?
Sorry, okay, good.
Thank you.
This is an opportunity for us to create structures in our school, whether it's the, the, the classroom teachers and how they create an atmosphere in their school and different experiences that allow the students to, um, to, to go through different events and really work through them. When you're talking, I talk about that, it's at the K-5 level, I know how old your children are. At the K-5 level, there's something called morning meeting. And in morning meeting, you get a chance to really understand and respect the differences across the, across the room. This is what I like to do. This is what, this is what, it's something that I'm really proud of or I'm really good at, or this is something that's difficult for me. And really build a sense of community. As you continue to go up, and as we all know, in middle school and high school, different challenges come up. And we're trying to equip our teachers with understanding, these are the things that the children in front of you are facing and this is how we're gonna be able to navigate and work through those specific situations.
I agree with that.
But there's no, there's no, let's, let's, it, let's force this in or force that thing. I, I'm gonna answer one more of your questions along the lines of the political side. And I'm glad you brought that up because I think it's important for the community to understand. I can't control what's happening outside in our country. And I co-totally understand the assessment of, this type of work is politically driven. I can sit here and tell you, this is not a political point because you don't know what my political affiliation is. And nor, nor is it important for me to share that. What I can tell you is, my affiliation is committed to making sure that the students here feel valued and feel like they're respected. That has no political party. So, along the lines of the things that are happening outside, which I will not deny, I understand that there are things that are happening outside in the country that make people pause and really make people concerned. But that doesn't mean that that's our reality here. So, when we started this work, we were committed to making sure that we opened the books and really tried to do our best to educate our community on everything that we are doing. We held, we held meetings last year that we presented to the Board, something that we never do, of bringing in this, this, this work. We presented to the Board and talked about what this is gonna be all about. We also, which other schools don't do, is we really make sure that we have our community's voice at the forefront of this assessment. Now you make a very good point. If people don't answer it, how do we know their perspective? Well, to be quite honest, and I'm so happy that they did it, there were families that came in and sat with myself and Dr. Fair that are very much concerned about what this work is all about. We had a great conversation. And the thing that I said to them about not being a part of it, it's, they are, they're making the decision to not be a part of it. Everybody has an opportunity to say how they feel, whatever you feel. And that's the benefit of having, having a survey. If people are purposely not taking part in it, I can't force our community to do it. I can only continue to, to be the person that's gonna educate our community on what we're doing and ask for that participation. And, and that's really where, where my line of, of, of the scope of what I could do really stops. Um, I'm hoping that people change their mind and say, if by chance they're having a great experience, put it down. If you feel like there's challenges, put that down too. People are also concerned, like, who's gonna see this information? I, I, I really feel hesitant about putting my name to the survey. All of that stuff was accounted for and it's all housed with the outside organization. So people don't have to feel like there's gonna be, uh, a change, which it wouldn't happen, but I understand the concern of how people feel about each other. So we're really trying to dot our i's and cross our t's to do this the right way so it doesn't turn into the different events that you're talking about that's happening out around the country, that doesn't happen here. And every part of this process will be very clear with what we're doing, what our findings are, and what the considerations are in the future.
Okay, I agree.
Thank you, Dr. Jacob.
I agree to disagree with what you're saying, having around, outside around the country, it is happening here. I go into the Mawha Public Library, I see what books are there. In terms of what your political, I don't care what your politics are, but I see actions are more important than words.
Okay.
And I've seen that.
Thank you, Jack. And I, I just would suggest, Dr. Jacob, that you seem to have, uh, several concerns and you can always reach out to Dr. Deturo and Dr. Fair because they've had these conversations with other parents as well. And I just wanna, um, the only other piece that I wanna say is, as a board, and I wanna really highlight this, um, we are a non-partisan board. We're, we're not elected based on partisan politics. And, um, that, I, can I finish whatever you say? Okay. Um, and there are those of us who disagree on this board. We agree to disagree, but we are able to build consensus for what's best for the students of Mawha. So I think we have to be careful because politics does not come into board decision-making here in Mawha, for sure.
Agree to disagree.
Okay, thank you very much.
You'd be wrong.
Can I comment since I was named?
Uh, sure, Dr. Park, let me give you the floor, but. Okay, thank you.
Of course you do, it was fun, good.
Um, so I just wanna be very clear about what I did and didn't say. Um, I pointed out that there were achievement gaps present in the data presented several weeks ago. Uh, we saw them again today. Those are specifically students from low socioeconomic background, Hispanic students and black or African-American students. At no point did I say that those discrepancies, or those achievement gaps, rather, uh, were caused by discrimination. At no point did I use the words racist or racism.
You said race.
You absolutely did.
We don't know, we don't know, so we can just bring it up here.
No, I did not. Listen to her.
Oh, I did not, okay, fine.
I did not.
Alright, continue, continue.
I did not suggest that they were caused by racists or by racism. What I said was very simple. There is data. It exists, it shows these achievement gaps. We need to look at that data, disaggregate it and treat that data in an intellectual way and get to the bottom of it and figure out what's going on. That is all I said. I did not suggest a cause to those, to those achievement gaps. I did not say that. So my words, unfortunately, have been misrepresented.
Okay.
Um, I did not say those things. I stand by my comments as they were said several weeks ago. I have nothing to add. I believe that my comments were correct and I stand by them.
You stand by it and now you're changing it, which is fine. You're right, there's other confounding factors in those. And you can talk more about that.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Jacob. Thank you very much.
Like family, culture, work ethic, that's common sense. Sociological research is needed.
Dr. Jacob.
But, I'm glad.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Thank you very much.
Michelle Salzman, Times Journal Report. Is it possible there can be a gap, just 'cause there's a gap? Like, for instance, I'm really bad at math, really good at other things. No one really dug deep.
Ms. Salzman, direct your comments towards the day that's here. Thank you.
It just is. So, do we spend, how much time, money, resources do we spend digging into things that maybe just are? That's my first comment. My second comment involves the equity survey. Um, for the K through five level, there's a, there's a lot of graphics on here. So I'm assuming for the kindergartners and first graders who can't read, that the, this will be given by the teacher. So can you explain the format of that to me? Will they read the question and then say, "Which of these emojis do you identify with?" Or how will that work?
Sure.
So along the lines of the K-5 survey, what, what this, the students are gonna be experiencing, yes, there's an emoji scale. Um, the teachers are gonna be using that scale prior to them taking the survey for them to get comfortable with what this even means. Um, depending on our, uh, our, our, our level of students, whether it's third through fifth or, or K through two, um, our teachers are gonna be reading the, um, the questions to them. They'll have either a tablet or they'll have a computer and they'll be able to pick the choice that they want or they feel is appropriate for that question.
Okay. Um, and my second question is a general question. How are you gonna parse this data on the backend when it comes in and, let's take one of these questions for example. I'm encouraged to speak my truth and share my thoughts. And you have fifty responses of "never." Okay? How are you gonna know the context that those "nevers" are given? So let's say my daughter's not comfortable in class because they spent half the class period talking about gender and the three different kinds of sex. And she's uncomfortable talking about that at the age of thirteen. So she answers "never." You have another child who answers "never" because they feel that they're still not being adequately represented despite everything the district's done. So you have a, a garbage pail of answers with no context. How are you gonna determine what needs to be done if you don't know the perspective the answer's coming from?
That's a great question. So, the, the, and, and I'm glad you brought that up because, um, as we shared at the last meeting, along the lines of the, the value of the survey. Um, historically in our district, there was, and we'll just talk about previous surveys. There was a survey to the community and oftentimes there's action following that survey. This survey is one of, I believe it was five different opportunities to gather information. We have the town hall, we have the survey, we have them coming in and having focus groups. Then we also have them coming in, talking to students. Remember the focus groups is a wide variety of, of people, hopefully people continue to sign up. Then we also have them come in and talk to students. But then further, there's also the audit that they come in and they speak to, um, central office, they speak to building administrations, they look at our curriculum, they look at our policies. So there's a number of different entry points into understanding what this is all about. The survey, to speak to your point, is really an opportunity for them to look further. They're not gonna make a determination solely on a question of the survey. It gives them an opportunity to say, "You know what? This data really makes me wonder, I need to find out more about this." And then they can go in and start to ask different questions, whether it's to staff, whether it's to administrations, whether it's to students, whether it's to focus groups, to really get more clarity on whatever that data set has said to them.
But if they're anonymous, how are you gonna know who to go to? So you're gonna get these, you're saying this is twenty percent of the data points that you receive, that you're using, one-fifth. How are you gonna, how are they gonna know who to approach?
The, the, the company is going to utilize that data to drive their focus. I'm not the one who's going to be doing the, the digging or the, or the fact gathering. The fact of the matter is, is this survey's gonna guide their questions. Depending, they don't have a list of questions that they share with us or a strategy that says, "We're gonna talk to this person about this specific question." That's why there's a wide variety of questions. It's not even just a singular question. Oftentimes, they'll couple questions and say, "You know, this is providing an area of focus for our next steps." So along lines of strategies of, if this specific question says this specific thing, I'm not gonna be able to, to explain to you what their strategy is for those specific questions.
They can't have a strategy for the question because there's no answer.
So basically, the, the, the answers to these questions on the survey, they're gonna be looking for trends like that. And if, for instance, they see that, uh, that question and everybody marks "never" and the next question, everybody marks, you know, "always," well now they know where they need to spend their time to ask more questions, do a little bit of digging. This is gonna inform the process going forward. So this isn't gonna provide any answers, this is gonna be, this is, this will provide where they ask the questions going forward.
And the, the name is optional, obviously, as you can see on the survey in front of you. But also there is an opportunity at the end of each category, that there is a, an opportunity for comment. So I agree with you in terms of context, that's really important. So if a student feels, um, they wanna provide their context, that's what that, that open box is for, for them to share kind of what that "never" really means to them.
And the results are gonna be, um, released, correct? Is that very recent?
Thank you, Ms. Salzman. Yes, thank you.
Chris Hughes, Do Mathy Place. I just wanted to start off by saying, I do feel welcomed by everyone. We just had the orientation meeting on Tuesday, so I just wanna thank everyone that was at that meeting for welcoming me with open arms. I am very excited to be working with everyone. Uh, my question today is about transportation. So a couple moms have approached me saying that their child is coming home late, around like four, four fifteen, uh, from GW. And I was just wondering, uh, because I believe that this is only starting since, uh, day one of this year, what's been causing the delays? Are the delays, are they being approached in the right way or, and how are we dealing with it?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Mr. Blaker or Dr. Charles?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Along the lines of the, the GW situation, we have been working with, uh, transportation. We've also spoke with, uh, a couple different parents, along the lines of their concerns. There's, uh, there's, uh, one or two buses that do come a little, come a little bit late. The issue with busing, to be quite honest with you, and, um, I'm, I'm more than happy to share, um, when we went out to bid last year, there was a huge, um, challenge of making sure that we were able to fill our routes with, uh, with bus drivers and with companies that are willing to take on our buses. With that, um, there are a number of things that we have to take on account when we take on bus contracts. We work with Scholastic and we also have internal bus drivers as well. Um, with Scholastic, oftentimes there are tiered bus routes, which means that they're coming from other districts. And, uh, we had to take on those routes in order to fill our routes.